Good evening, everyone. I want to call the Anacortes City Council meeting for December 7th, 2020 to order. Ms. Huck, could you take the attendance?
Mr. Carter?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Mr. Walters?
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Here.
Ms. Moulton?
Here.
Mr. McDougal?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Mayor Gear.
Yes, Mr. McDougal.
I'd like to move to excuse Mr. Miller this evening.
Right.
Second.
The motion by Mr. McDougal, second by Mr. Young, all in favor, excuse me, Matt Miller, signified by saying yes.
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 Both same side, motion carries. Thank you. Well, the next item this evening, actually, I just have a comment before the next item, is that at the end of the meeting this evening, we will go into executive session, and that'll be after Item 6A. And I'll explain that and the procedures when we get to that item in the agenda this evening. So we'll move on now to Item 2A, which is our COVID-19 update. And as of this afternoon, Island Hospital has tested over 9,000 tests in Anacortes since March. They've had a total of 134 positive cases from their testing. But as of this afternoon, the Skagit County Public Health estimates that in the 98221 zip code, right now, we have 150 to 159 current positive COVID cases. Quite a difference. In Skagit County, I'm going to give you a November 6th and then a December 6th report to see what's happened in a month. On November 6th, we had 1,370 people that had totaled tested positive in the county over the whole several months. As of December 6th, we had 2,213 cases. So in one month, almost 700 cases, a little over 700 cases. And as of November 6th, we had 26 deaths. As of December 6th, we've had 31 deaths in the county. As November 6th, we had 107 people hospitalized, and as of December 6th, 147 people hospitalized. So our local and our community and Skagit County has definitely been impacted by COVID. This is an increase of 844 cases in the last month, an increase of 40 hospitalizations, and five tragic deaths. Where currently, we have 325.9 new cases per 100,000 people. 325. We were at 25 right before 4th of July. And the percentage of individuals testing positive to date right now is 16.2%. Washington State's Department of Health says we've had 186,000 cases in the state of positive tests, and we've had 3,065 people have died in the state of Washington. The United States, we're over 14 and a half million people have had COVID, and 281,253 people have died. And globally, they're estimating over 67 million cases and 1.5 million deaths. And that is my sad COVID report for today. Are there any comments? All right. All right, we're going to move on to the Port City Liaison report. And I think I was the only one there from the city. It was a very short agenda, and we basically just reviewed the latest work that the port's been doing down in their cleanup site near the N Avenue Park. And we talked about, they're working with the Samish Tribe on renaming that area, maybe Ironwood would go with historically correct. And they're working with the Parks Department on that. And they're also going to be meeting on a regular basis with the Samish. The port is, they want to have a partnership like we do with the Samish Tribal Nation. Because it was a very low attendance, we didn't get into much of anything else. But we did talk about the importance of the role of the Port City Liaison group, and we really, the Port Commissioners were there, and we talked about the role of the Commissioners and the council. And we wanted to make sure that we talked to the policy level, so we can compare what the city's policy or vision moving forward is, or the port's policy and vision, and that we keep it at that level on the big issues. So we're going to dig into that. Staff is making sure the council and the Commissioner are briefed before those meetings. That was the one thing we committed to doing, because oftentimes, we show up and whatever's on the agenda is on the agenda, and so that we can start having more meaningful conversations. There was thought that perhaps we got a little sideways in the previous meeting, talking about everyone digging in, and we felt like it was important to establish the role of staff and the role of the elected official. And that the staff needed to do more work on getting you as elected officials the information you needed. And so that in the future, the port and the city should work with better alignment on policy issues and visions. So when we're talking about things like the Ninth Street corridor or a convention center, that we get aligned earlier on in the process. And it was really, it was probably like a 20 to 25-minute meeting total, if that. So that's the report on that today. The next item is Item 2C, it's a Public Safety Committee report.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Carter?
We had our meeting last week, and I'll keep it short. But first, the Fire Department, they're looking at their CFP, prioritizing items for funding. Their number one is replacing the ladder truck. And then we also talked a little bit about Stations 1 and 2 and how they've outgrown them. The Police Department, they had boards a couple of weeks ago. They currently have eight candidates that they're looking at for lateral transfer in. And then they're also looking at changing their firearm training location from Washington County, bringing it closer, which will also save them a bunch of money. And that's about it.
Anything, any questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Carter. Finance Committee report.
I'm Mayor Gear.
McDougal.
The Finance Committee met, actually, and discussed similar topics as the Public Safety Committee. We were discussing the Fire Department's CFP requests, or CFP plan over the next few years, and essentially kind of doing some brainstorming with yourself as well as with Chief Kennedy as to how to go about solving for getting some important big projects done and fitting it into the revenue picture as it appears over the course of the next five or six years. So we didn't come to hard conclusions, per se, just yet. I think it's going to be kind of ongoing dialogue.
Okay. Thank you. Any additions to that report? All right.
Mayor Gear.
Yes, Mr. Walters?
It might be worth noting a couple of our maybe preliminary conclusions. And that is that what we need, among other things, is to know how much it's going to cost to build Station 3. We've got a $3 million or so figure in the CFP a number of years out for Station 3. But if we had better analysis of what the cost actually will be, we could do better planning for that expense. So we talked quite a bit about budgeting some amount of money in the next year to do that analysis. And I think, at least in my view, we don't need a lot of money, maybe $50,000, maybe not the full $200,000 that had been previously discussed for that effort.
Along the finance piece, I'd like to just, unless you want to do it, Mr. Walters, talk about our exit conference today with the Office of Washington State Auditor. The city of Anacortes had an error-free, no audit issues at all for the audit for 2019. The auditors were very complimentary of the city. For many years, we have, this is the type of operation we run, everything audit-free. They also commented on our exceptional finance staff and how well they worked and the support that the state auditors were given by our staff to get the information they needed to do the audit. And the audit that they worked on this year, they did accountability for public resources. They looked at all our financial statements, and they looked at our Anacortes Economic Development Corporation, which, by the way, has had no activity in years, but they always identify different things to look at. So a good report from the state auditor's office today. All right. And now, no museum, the museum did not meet. And then the next item is the Fiber Committee.
Mayor Gear.
Yes, Mr. Walters.
Mr. McDougal and I met as the Fiber Committee, and we kind of tag teamed there because we both had to run to our day jobs. But we talked quite extensively about the dark fiber policy ordinance that we've been working on, that City Council has seen once. Made a few more revisions that are pretty simplistic, and it'll come back to City Council sometime pretty soon here. We think it's basically ready for adoption. And then we got some updates from Fiber as to their progress with the aerial expansion and connecting up various customers. One thing of substantial note is that our outside plant coordinator is going to be starting a National Guard deployment in 2021. And we only have one of those, so we're going to need to pick up the slack when he's gone. And planning is apparently underway for his absence. Bruce, did you have anything else to add from that meeting?
Yeah, one quick item for the part that I got to be at. We discussed the business plan spreadsheet, the giant spreadsheet that the Fire Department reviewed with the council last week, and how we had asked them to sort of model out kind of an Option A, Option B, as far as paying back, say, any construction loans and/or, and also paying back the general fund loan that we gave the Fire Department. And so the numbers now show a payoff if they immediately pay off any loans as quickly as possible versus an alternative sort of Plan B if they amortize, say, any loans over 30 years, and what that looks like from a cash flow perspective. And basically, it shifts, you know, sort of net positive cash into the general fund a few years earlier, but the one where we amortize over 30 years. However, that also means that, you know, we of course pay over the course of the life of any loans a larger amount of interest, and so the net additional cash that goes into the general fund over the course of 30 years is smaller. So it's nice, I thank the Fire Department for doing that work. It's great to have that sort of Option A, Option B, so as we continue with the project, we can kind of, you know, we can adjust as needed. I think the Fiber Committee themselves, we all feel pretty good about just paying off any debts that are taken on by the project as quickly as possible. So we're sort of thinking of that as Option A. I think we'll maybe review some of that more with the full council at the next, at the next Fiber Department update with the council, although they haven't confirmed with me that that's the case, if it'd be in the next one or not.
All right, well, thank you. All right, and there was no, Public Works Committee was canceled this evening, so that will move to another week. So now we're going to move to Item 3 on the agenda, and it is our public comment period. And this is, anyone in the audience can speak to us about anything that is not on the agenda this evening. So if you would like to speak, if you would raise your hand, and Matt will bring you in. Okay, I don't see anybody with their hand up. So we'll move on then from Item 3 to Item 4A, which is, this is under our consent agenda. It's our minutes of the November 23rd, 2020 meeting. And Item 4B, approval of claims in the $370,960.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Young.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
You?
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Walters?
Are those the only two items on the consent agenda?
Correct.
So we've removed the grant?
Oh, I don't have that in front of me.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Hoagland?
I'm sorry, we reissued the agenda late in the week, last week. I apologize for the confusion. But we do have an interlocal agreement for a small grant. It's a pass-through grant from Washington State, and it's a federal grant that passes through Washington State to the city of Anacortes. We did the late reissuance of the agenda because we learned that there was a timing issue. They need to do that drawdown by December 11th, and that's why we wanted to get this interlocal agreement on the agenda this week.
Council need any more clarification on that interlocal? Anthony, does your motion include that?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
And we have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second by Mr. Carter. Any more discussion? All in favor, signal by saying aye.
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 Both same side, motion carries. Now we're on to Item 5A, it's a public hearing, open for public comment on Ordinance 3080 for the 2021 to 2026 capital facilities plan update. This is a discussion with possible action. Mr. Hoagland?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council and members of the audience. I have a few slides that I put together going over some of the adjustments that were made to the CFP since the last meeting. I incorporated those into the same slide deck with adjustments that illustrate changes that were made to the annual budget. So sorry about that, it's kind of all put together. So however council would like to do that, I can go through those CFP elements now, or if you want to address public comments now. I would point out that the public hearing for the annual budget is closed. This is the public hearing on the CFP. And obviously, the CFP public hearing needs to close before the ordinance can be adopted. And the CFP ordinance and the annual budget ordinance need to be adopted concurrently, whether that's tonight or a week from now, but whatever council's pleasure is.
So, Mr. Hoagland, right now, I don't have anybody with their hands up, so why don't you do your presentation, give people, the audience, a public opportunity to listen to that, then I'll take comments and hopefully close the public hearing after that. So go ahead.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, there we go. So this is the ordinance for the CFP, Ordinance Number 3080, totals 147 million. We'll come back to that in just a moment. We also have updated draft ordinance for the annual budget, which totals 75 million. So we'll go through the adjustments that have been made since our last discussion, and then come back to that. I did want to... Okay. I did want to go through our history a little bit. So it started October 5th with the mayor's budget message, and we've met virtually every week since then, except for one, I guess. And here we are tonight, December 7th, continuing the discussion on the CFP and the budget. And I did want to point out that we have all of that material available on the city's website. If you go to anacortesva.gov, you can navigate to Finance and then to the Budget and CFP. So the first item I wanted to talk about, there was a lot of discussion this year about the public safety element of our budget and incorporation of potentially a social worker into the Police Department. So what I did is, this top screenshot right here, this is this bars number, this is the account numbers we use in our budgeting system. 001.310, that illustrates the police budget, and the last two digits, dot 41, represent that that's a professional services budget line. And what we did is added $50,000. We initially had $8,000 in this bars number. We added $50,000 to explore development of a strategic plan and implementation of that social worker in the 2021 budget. And I understand there was some discussion at Public Safety a week or two back about that, and so there was some discussion about how to do that. So the idea that there's some money identified to develop that implementation plan and then pursue bringing those skills onboard to the city of Anacortes. So if you look at the police budget, there isn't a change to the bottom line number. And I circled down here, what this is, is it's a screenshot of the same bars number within the police again, 001.310, but it's the salary and wages line. And the initial budget request was 2.189 million. And you can see, we've just reduced that amount by 50,000 to accommodate this additional 50,000 in professional services. And the idea is, we know that we will have some positions open for some period of time into next year. I believe we discussed this the last couple of weeks. So there will be cash flow savings within that salary and wages line item, just because there will be some months where we're not paying all of those staff that are budgeted. We do have open positions within the Police Department currently, and anticipating that that'll continue through next year sometime.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Walters?
So to summarize what Mr. Hoagland was explaining there, I think it's important to note that there will be no reduction in police staffing as a result of this change. It's basically just on paper, freeing up some cash that becomes available because we can't instantly fill positions.
Exactly, thank you. Very well put. Another question that came out of our previous discussions, this is having to do with the facilities budget for 2021. There's $400,000 identified for facilities work, both in the CFP and the annual budget. In addition to the 400,000, we added 100,000 to the facilities budget to support a direct digital control, or DDC, for the HVAC system. And that's a software system that will enable the HVAC systems for City Hall and the other decentralized buildings to be controlled, I was going to say, be controlled from City Hall, in addition to be controlled from City Hall, to be controlled, period. The system that's currently in place is no longer supported, so once that system fails, we won't have a system to control the HVAC. So that's what that 100,000 is. The 400,000 that's identified in the facilities budget, there was a list requested of what that 400,000 would accomplish. This is the list that facilities provided us. You can see there's a few items in the library. Well, there's one significant item in the library, and that's a fire suppression system for the server room. The museum still needs work on its roof, so that's still on the facilities list. Public restrooms need work in City Hall. Also, the third floor break room is on that list for some work. And fire station, a couple of projects, interior paint and flooring. In Ops, their facility needs gutters. And in public safety building, panic buttons and security fencing has been on the facilities list to accomplish for some time now. And then, of course, emergency repairs, cleaning HVAC system, there seems to always be unanticipated things that come up that'll need to be addressed.
And that workshop in Ops, I think is mainly for the Parks Department, they have never had an adequate place to do some of their indoor workshop work, so they're addressing that.
Oh, thank you, Mayor, I skipped right over that. Yep, that's exactly right. So this is kind of the last part of the budget that I put together. So this is a summary of what the budget looks like now, and we covered a lot of ground the last couple of months, and I'll try and summarize this kind of quickly, and I know council will remember a lot of this, but I wanted to point out a lot of the things that we have accomplished. So the total for the general fund sits at 19.7 million now, and that includes a reduction in museum staffing of .7 FTE. Parks at 2 million, and that also includes a reduction in staff. And the way we allocate the staff in the Parks and Rec Department, it also impacts cemetery, the way we allocate their time through the different departments. So there's a bit of a reduction in cemetery. Library, council will remember that we've reduced the FTE count and the library as well. The road construction, I'm sorry, the road maintenance fund at 2.66 million. So this includes an additional 500,000 in the overlay program. So that overlay program with this, in this draft of the budget, sits at 1.55 million for the year. When I spoke with Public Works earlier today, it looks like they have an overlay project of around 400,000 that is going to, that they won't be completing this year, that they'll complete early next year. So they are looking at about two, sorry, looking at nearly 2 million, about 1.9 million in overlay work next year with that carryover. The road construction at 1.7, the TVD pass-through, this is the 210 sales tax to support the overlay program. Washington Park at 273, Parks construction, affordable housing, EMS, impact fees, lodging tax, we've set this at 413,988, and that's actually based on the last Lodging Tax Advisory Committee meeting that we had. So council has not actually seen that request for that amount of funding. But I put that in there as I anticipated that would be the high mark that would be considered. But that's, you'll see more details on that in the coming week. REIT, 1.8 million. So you remember, REIT is a pass-through, real estate excise tax is a restricted revenue stream that supports our public works projects. So that's a pass-through to some of these other areas, including the Parks Construction, Road Construction, and Road Maintenance. And then the Utilities, we've talked about ERNR is our equipment rental, and the Fire Pension Fund sits at 44.9 million. So I put a couple of bullet points here. So this does include a social worker, includes a line of credit to support the...
Excuse me, Mr. Hoagland, you said the Fire Pension Fund was 44.9 million?
No, no, I'm sorry, it's 44,090, yes. My mistake, I apologize. There's a line of credit included in the funding sources in the general fund to support the continued fiber backbone build-out. It's got REIT grants supporting the road facilities and parks projects. We, as I mentioned, we have reduced headcount across several departments. It has reduced ERNR contributions across the board. But again, we've talked about this many times in the past, the local government budgets in Washington only really work in an expanding economy. And that's not what we have seen this year through the COVID crisis, and there's still a lot of unknowns and questions about what we'll be looking at next year. But I believe that this is a budget that works. It doesn't have everything we would like to see, certainly doesn't have everything I'd like to see, and I know you feel the same, but it does work in the environment that we're in. So I do have, if there's any questions on this, we can address those. I do have some CFP adjustments I can go through, so whatever...
Yes, Ms. Moulton?
Thanks, thank you, Mr. Hoagland, this is super helpful. I have one question on the previous slide, and I'm asking this because of our financial situation, is about the City Hall third floor break room. So I'd like to know what amount we have budgeted for that, and I'm also thinking that that's... I'm also thinking that that's not really a priority unless the roof, I don't think, unless there's a roof issue or something.
Sure.
Especially with people working from home so much. I, I'm just curious if we can save a little money there, that would be great.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. And I, so we don't have amounts specifically tied to any of these projects. And I, I suspect that this third floor break room is really gonna be at the bottom of that, of that list. And what facilities will do, they're pretty good about trying to combine, um, combine projects to, you know, take advantage of economies of scale and synergy, you know, things of that nature. But as far as that, as that third floor break room goes, I don't know the specifics of what's in that project or what that would cost, but I, I really believe that that would be kind of the, the bottom of the list. And I, so I, I can't give you a better answer than that. Um, I can say the public restroom upgrade, that sounds like, like maybe that's, you know, nicer fixtures or something like that. Um, you'll, you all understand City Hall's very old building, and the way those restrooms are configured, um, the men's and women's actually sit back to back, and those fixtures, um, are not very, uh, stable. And so that's something that facilities have been trying to address for a couple of years. But yeah, it's a point well taken. Uh, we can, we can follow up with facilities and get a little more information on what the idea is in that third floor break room.
And Carolyn, I concur. I think, you know, that would be, not be of high priority this year. It's been kind of something we look at every year, and it always gets pushed to the side because there's always something more important than that.
Yes, especially now, so I think it's great.
Absolutely. Point taken, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Um, so if it's okay, we can kind of jump into, uh, some of the facilities projects that we looked at. And what I have here is just a screenshot of the different summary pages of the budgets that we did some adjustments in. Um, there's already been some discussion tonight about the fire CFP, so, and that's what this summary, that's what this summary is right here. You may remember, uh, the last time we looked at this, we had, um, about over four hundred thousand in projects identified for 2021. What we've done is, uh, eliminated some of those altogether, like some of the equipment, um, that was identified for 2021. Uh, we agreed that it made sense to, uh, eliminate those altogether, and if equipment replacement needs come up, we will address those on, uh, an as-needed basis as we go through the year. Uh, we bumped out the ladder truck to 2022. Uh, what we left here, uh, is two hundred thousand in the year 2021 for March Point Fire Station, and that's for, uh, a, a review and some preliminary planning on that fire station, and that'll be funded with, uh, impact fees. So the full two hundred thousand of that is identified to be funded with impact fees, which we do have on hand at this point. Um, the, those projects in the future, 2022 and on, some of these, um, need, uh, financing strategies put in place, and that's kind of what the, the plan is for next year, as we get into 2021, developing a robust, uh, financing strategy for both the ladder truck and March Point Fire Station.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Walters.
So what we talked about at the finance committee was reducing the two hundred thousand dollars for the March Point Fire Station to fifty, or maybe a hundred, and saving the rest. Um, the rest is maybe still a hundred or a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's real money. And we really don't need a complete design of the March Point Fire Station at this point. What we need is a, a real cost estimate. But I still advocate doing that. We need to save money wherever we can, and that seems like a spot to do it. We don't need to spend two hundred thousand dollars to get a cost estimate and a one hundred percent complete design on the fire station when we do not have money for it for one, two, three, or four years out.
Mayor Gear.
Ms. Walton.
I would concur with that.
All right. Bruce? Oh, I thought you had your hand up. Okay. Anybody else? Okay, go ahead, Steve.
Okay, so if we reduce, so one of the things, I think I have that listed in a later slide, all of our 2021 CFP budgets now agree to the 2021 annual budget. So any adjustment here would result in an adjustment in the, um, annual budget ordinance as well, which is, which is totally fine. I guess I just wanted to, um, point that out. If you compare, um, you know, ordinances from week to week, there will be that, that variation. So, uh, if everybody agrees to that, that you want to see that reduced to fifty thousand, happy to make that change and bring that back on the final draft next week.
Hey, Mayor Gear.
Ms. Cleveland, Ms. Brown.
Um, I just had one question, and I am sorry I missed that public safety meeting, um, this last week. I know that there was discussion of needing a study done for the main fire station upgrade, and I see the million dollars for 2024. Um, is, does that need a study, or has it been determined that that, you know, a, a chunk of change is not needed to do those upgrades?
That did not rise to the top as a, something that we need to do next year.
Okay, but I'm seeing the million dollar upgrade in 2024, so I'm wondering, is it going to need, you know?
I think once we get to that point, it will need some, something like that. We'll probably need to break that apart by a year or, you know, a year or two. So it's, at, at this point, that, uh, that million dollar for the main fire station is kind of a marker out there in, in, you know, 2024. Once we get closer to that period, we'll refine that, you know, design versus actual, uh, actual work and illustrate that in the, in the CFP.
Thank you.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Walters.
And our, in our discussion in the finance committee, we, what we thought was that if some of that two hundred thousand dollars was gonna be going toward a consultant to analyze necessary changes to the main fire station, that that probably wasn't money that we needed to spend on a consultant, that we could instead just identify those required changes in-house. Because we're not talking about building a new one, we're talking about upgrading fixtures and upgrading finishes and those kinds of things to be commercial-grade and more durable. Now, if we have any of that wrong, then that would change the analysis, but that was our understanding.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Young.
And, and just, I guess for my own purposes, as well as any of the listeners' purposes, what we're dealing with right now is the crisis that we're currently under, recognizing that, you know, maybe a few months from now, things may be a little bit different. And so it allows us to deal with what we are having to face now and to confront it. And then as we move forward into the year to come, as far as the years after that, we can make whatever adjustments are necessary. Correct?
Correct. And, and back to the main fire station, in addition to upgrades, um, I know another bay has been discussed too, because we may need a whole additional bay, uh, by that year. So, okay. Go ahead, Steve.
Um, this is the CFP for the, uh, general government. The main thing we did here, two items, the Creoso pile removal. Um, this was, this hundred and twenty thousand initially we had in 2021. Through our initial budget discussions, when we were developing the annual budget, we bumped that out because it relied on a significant amount of, uh, cash reserves. So we bumped that out to 2022. This now agrees with the annual budget, which doesn't have, uh, anything budgeted for that. The four hundred thousand in facilities projects, we talked about the hundred thousand for the DDC. The other significant change we made is we bumped out the community youth center to 2024, um, the two point five million. We certainly don't want to lose sight of that. So we still have it in the CFP. You know, the, the ideal would be that, uh, resources become available sooner than that, and then, uh, we can, um, do an amendment at any time to, uh, to move that timing.
And we do have a donor that's willing as soon as we, you know, find a location for it and a partner. So.
Um, this is the fiber section. Um, previous CFP, this was included in the general government part of the CFP, so we've broken that out to, uh, illustrate fiber on its own, as its own department. Uh, we also refined the resources down here that will be used to support that fiber build-out. So we have grants illustrated for next year and 2023 at two million each. Um, the, the feedback, um, my understanding is what we've been hearing back on our initial, initial grant research has been positive, so, um, and then the balance of the, uh, balance of the resources, uh, through debt financing in later years. Um, we had a few changes in the utilities. So this is the, the water utility. Um, we revised this now so it balances to the, uh, the annual budget. One of the, um, one of the biggest items are, um, we have the property purchase still listed in 2021 in the CFP. That's already been completed, so that's been removed. And these other capital projects, uh, balance to the 2021 annual budget. Likewise, in the sanitary sewer budget, um, this is balanced now to what we have in the annual budget. Much of the work that you would normally see in, in a typical year in the, uh, INI is the, uh, inflow and intrusion work that we normally do up in the top line here, as well as pump station upgrades. Those have been eliminated for 2021. There's gonna be more focus on the, uh, large outfall project that you see down, down here. Uh, instead of the pump station upgrade, I believe they're doing, um, this three hundred and fifty, I believe, is a, um, is a basin rehab, and then there's also four hundred thousand for the, uh, dewatering facility. Just a small change to, um, the solid waste CFP. We had a hundred thousand budgeted in the annual budget. Normally, we budget thirty-three thousand a year for container replacement. Um, this agrees to the annual budget now. My understanding is, um, there was a desired increase just for one year to, um, to, to do kind of a catch-up on containers that need replacing, and then it'll drop back down to its typical thirty-three thousand a year. But the overall CFP budget, this is just the matrix that's included in the, uh, CFP ordinance. You can see it outlined by department here, and that covers all six years of the CFP, totaling one hundred and forty-seven point one million. Tried to grab the edits that were included in this series, including the, what was done in fiber, fire, the overlay, which is the transportation section of the CFP. Uh, the utilities on, in the Parks Department, there were some grammatical errors that we corrected as well.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Walters.
The version of the ordinance in our packet is a hundred and forty-five million?
Uh, yes, I'm sorry. That's, that's right. So both the CFP ordinance and the budget ordinance will need to be, uh, republished. Those have both been, both been updated. And those will be going out tonight. I'll get that updated information over to Ms. Hunt, um, to get out onto the city website and to council. So any questions, I'd be happy to answer, or if not, um.
Okay, I'll go to the public. Um, is anyone in the audience who'd like to comment on the CFP? All right, no one has their hand up. So council questions from Mr. Hoagland?
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Walters.
If I heard Mr. Hoagland correct, we are now up to one point five five million on the overlay program?
Yes, that's correct.
That is, um, a lot closer to where we had targeted, which was one point eight. Why don't we go to one point eight, though?
We certainly could. I did a, uh, yeah, I did a, a projection of where I, I think we'll be at, um, year, so our, our option for funding is, is REIT. That's really the only, the only option we have, uh, to expand the overlay program at this point, this year. Um, and I, so, including the, uh, the additional five hundred thousand to the overlay program, bringing it up to one point five five, including projected estimates of revenues this year, projected estimates of revenues next year, and the other, um, budgeted projects relying on REIT, and estimating a balance at the end of next year at two point three million, which, um, is relatively healthy if you wanted to bump. I mean, and please keep in mind, this is based on, you know, based on estimates of, of real estate excise tax revenues coming in next year. I mean, it could drop off the table to nothing, um, depending on what the economy does. I remember the worst part of the recession, our real estate excise tax was less than three hundred thousand in total for both REIT one and REIT two. But projections show that it will probably be over two million dollars by the end of two years, which is relatively healthy.
So what happens to the rest of our CFP if we were to divert another two hundred thousand from REIT?
The existing, uh, the existing CFP, uh, the way it, the way it sits right now, everything in 2021, um, is, is funded.
Right.
In the, the short term, the short term, it, it doesn't take a hit, uh, sorry. The short term, over the next few years, our, um, I think our CFP will be fine, as long as those revenues don't drop off the table like, you know, like they did during the Great Recession. So if the economy starts to recover, the, you know, real estate market continues to stay strong, um, it'll probably be fine. The one unknown, or, the one unknown is we do have a couple of large grants out there with match requirements, and I don't know what level of match that is, whether it's, you know, thirty percent, or fifty percent, or ten percent. That hasn't been made clear.
So assuming that the economy stays the same and REIT continues to come in the door, though, you think we're good for the next six years of the CFP planning period?
Uh, I feel comfortable with the next three. The first half of that.
Okay. Yeah, so I, I, I would like us to get, get a little closer to the one point eight million for the overlay program, because we did commit to that number, and if we can do it, and if we can spend the money, it will, from everything we've been told, save money later.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Young.
Um, my, I guess my, my only concern with that, because I recognize that we did make a commitment, and I, I, I would like for us to, uh, try to adhere to that, but I think the challenge that we're really facing is an unprecedented time for all of us. And if it's a way that we could come back and revisit this, you know, as we go along and sort of de, see where we're gonna be within the next few months, because I, I do believe that, um, you know, the economy is shrinking, and my concern is if we commit all of it right now, I, I just think that it would be safe and sorry in, in having the revenue that we need, and it can allow us to revisit it if that's, you know, something we're willing to do.
Yeah, Mayor Gear.
Ms. Williams.
Thank you. Um, I was kind of curious, uh, Steve, is it feasible for us to kind of, to go with the, um, one point five million that's in this proposal, and then at, you know, after the first quarter or the second quarter, um, assess where our revenue streams are at, especially, um, the REIT? And I assume there's probably some negative impact because these projects need to be planned, and they take some, some, um, prep time. But I, I am a little concerned that, you know, even if the economy bounces back, where our housing market's going to be, because it requires transactions to get that revenue stream. And I, it seems like our transaction numbers are, are starting to drop just because there's less, um, homes on the market, um, and we're not, we're not, while the demands are, there aren't, there aren't the available construction happening that are, that's for sale. So, uh, that concerns me a little bit, and I'd wanna understand us, you know, some of those matching grants that are on the table, understanding what kind of. understanding what kind of impact it has if the economy doesn't bounce back as quickly as I think we're all hoping it does.
Uh, yeah, I think that's, your question about the planning for those projects is, is key to that. So that's something I can't, I can't speak to, um, but perhaps that's something we can, we can come back with next year. You know, doing, um, a budget amendment for the CS, we, we can amend the CFP whenever we amend the budget. It has to be done concurrently. We can do that anytime. So, so coming back, kind of the mechanics of, of an amendment are easy. But I honestly don't know what goes into that planning process for those overlays. So, um, we can get a better answer for you on that.
I guess my, my inclination would be to say, okay, we're, we're holding off on about $250,000 of overlay projects. I would be more inclined to make sure that that is in our 2022 budget and to make up for lost time and, and, and take the risk that tho- those street projects might be, have a little bit more maintenance because of the defer, the year of deferred, um, upkeep, but just so that we've got a little more cash on hand.
Okay, Mr. Walters?
There's another alternative, of course, and that is to move other REITs that we're already planning to spend in the facilities budget to the overlay program. There's $500,000 that we're planning to spend on facilities that could move to overlays. Move 100, 200, 250. I am not very satisfied with the list of projects as, uh, Mr. Hogland provided because they don't have any prices next to them and they don't have any priorities, really. I assume that top priority is the museum roof because we lose the facility if we lose a roof. But then things like the community room at the Ops building, um, we, we have spent a lot of money at that Ops building that has really flown under the radar in the last several years. That doesn't strike me as, as the same level of priority as the roads, which are degrading every minute that we're not repaving them. And they're so far that we have to go on some of the roads, too. And they're not even the ones that are going to get the overlays, you know, like K Avenue, like 41st, you know, they're, we've got, we've got problems. So I, I don't, I, I just really want to get as close as we can to achieving our pledge of 1.8 million dollars on those and not let them continue to fall behind. It'd be, be one thing if we just, if we, if we had such bad choices and we couldn't figure out how to do it. But it doesn't appear that we're in that bad of shape. I feel like we could pretty easily make this happen.
Mayor Gear? Okay, Ms. Moulton, Mr. Young?
Thank you. Would it be possible for us to get a better breakdown of those facilities projects and their costs for next week's meeting? And then we can really prioritize pretty seriously? Because I, I'm really in favor of, of putting our commitment, our committed promise of money to our road maintenance program. And I think there has to be a way that we can do that and still have some money in reserve.
We can, we can get it to you, and we can get it to you before next Monday because I was hoping next Monday we could come to conclusion. Mr. Young?
Uh, absolutely. What Ms. Moulton just said, that would, I think that would be a great idea. It would allow us to look at what those priorities are, and then we can make an informed decision. I, I totally agree with the commitment. It was just that my concern was I didn't want to draw down without, with so much uncertainty ahead. So I, I'm open to that, and I think that's a great option for us to consider.
And, and I will say that list, we can bring it back prioritized, but for me, the three top ones are the museum roof, the public restroom, so the fixtures stay on the wall, and the community workshop. Parks literally does not have a place to do their internal work. They've been working outside. They've never, they've never had a place to work, um, maybe like a single car garage situation. They were not included in that, the Ops upgrades. So I, that to me is real important, but we need to justify it and we need to bring it back with prices. So we, we can do that, um, in the next few days, get it to you.
Mayor Gear?
Ms. Gear?
Yes, Christine. And then Mr. Walters?
It was me.
Oh, it was called, and Mr. Walters?
Um, yeah, so that's the, the obvious place to look right now. Um, and I don't know if, what our second tier to look at would be because we do have this, I mean, we have this budget that is quite large and there ha- I, I'm not sure the best way to go about this, but there has to be money somewhere that we can access, that we can prioritize somewhere. So I don't know what the step beyond this would be if we only got $100,000 from this analysis. Like, what would our next step be? I don't know, but I would like someone to help me know that.
I think Mr. Hogland will be the person. Mr. Walters, what's your comment?
Uh, yeah, same with Ms. Moulton. I, I'm also, it, it's difficult for us to navigate in this area because we get, you know, two-word descriptions of what the project is rather than a more detailed one. And I think we understand that the, the cost estimates are rough order of magnitude. Until you've planned a project, you don't really know what it costs. But still, we, we don't really have anything to work with. So we don't know if we should spend $500,000 or $200,000. We don't, we don't really have a very good way of judging.
All right, we'll get that to you. All right, so this time, if I can, um, one of our attendees has their hand up. So I'm going to take any more final comments from the public on this public hearing. So, uh, Ms. Clark, do you have a comment on the public hearing, the capital facilities plan?
Hi there, can you hear me?
We can, yes, welcome.
Thank you so much, and, um, I just wanted to commend you all, council members, for the work you've been doing with this budget. It's an incredibly challenging year for everyone, and, um, I just wanted to commend you and celebrate the fact that amidst this incredibly difficult time, um, you have managed to find a way to support our community and the data that reflects our need for a social worker. And I had a question for you. I was just curious for a little more information about, um, Mr. Hogland mentioned, um, the 50,000 would be dedicated towards, um, researching or learning more about, um, this position. And so I was curious if some of those funds are specifically for consultation fees? Um, or if that was all specifically for salary? And then one last thing, this is just a comment. Um, I know that there was concern about the possibility of only having one position if there were going to be calls throughout the night. And I know that some of you may have already seen this data, but we looked a little bit more at those call numbers and the times that those calls were made, their peak times, were between 9:00 AM and 6:00 PM, which does, um, support the idea of at least one position being really helpful. So anyways, thank you so much. It's really exciting. We're all so proud of you and excited for our community. And, um, yeah, if you could, if you had the time to just clarify about what that meant of, of 50K being, uh, for the exploration of that position, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Um, any other comments from the public? So I could address that, Steve, if you want me to. I, out of the public safety, what the public safety committee thought was that that, we got that money in there, and that money was to be used potentially majority of the forest services once we identify what the needs are and who, who can provide those services in the interim this year as we come up with a strategic plan or develop what our model will look like. So very little of it was used for design or strategy or consultant. It was more to get real services to people. And we don't have exactly how we're going to do that right now. But I know, um, Councilman Moulton has some great ideas on next steps, and, um, Public Safety Committee is committed to that also. So, anyone else want to comment on that?
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Mr. Carter?
I just wanted to point out that just hiring someone isn't necessarily going to solve a lot of the issues because sending someone out, they're going to identify a need. We also need to work with the county because we, we find someone that has a need, then what do we do with them? Our county itself is lacking resources to be able to help these individuals. So this is just a small part of what we're eventually going to have to do in getting more involved with the county to receive other help also.
Thank you. All right, so is there anyone else in the community that wants to comment on the CFP? So Judy Billings, you have your hand up.
Can you, okay, can you hear me?
We can, welcome Judy.
Thanks. Listen, I have to tell you, I was very sorry to see that you folded with that $50,000 to a social worker. And the reason I feel that way is, as you probably know, a Seattle-embedded social worker was murdered, stabbed to death on a call. And to me, that shows exactly what's going to happen here. And I think it's, I think the police department could use the funds more than having a social worker. And I also was very impressed with how the police department handled, um, these social situations. So that's my comment.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, anyone else? Okay, all right, so at this time, if there's no other member of the public who'd like to comment, I'm going to close the public hearing or, or propose that we, um, the council, um, well, I'm going to close the public hearing for ordinance 3080, and then the council will continue on with the discussion and their possible action. Mr. Hogland, anything else on the capital facilities plan for tonight?
Uh, no ma'am, that's, uh, that's all I had, both for the CFP and the annual budget, unless there are other questions.
So, um, there, you can take possible action or we can move it forward to next week. So unless I hear, council will move it forward. Mr. Walters?
So we talked about, uh, some changes to the CFP, um, including the March Point Fire Station dollar amount, those kinds of things, and changes to the budget. So I don't think that we're ready to take action on either of them until they are harmonized and edited.
Okay.
Uh, I do have some additional proposals for the budget ordinance, um, which I sent to council members, uh, yesterday afternoon. The budget ordinance is approximately one page, and it lists the total amount of the funds, um, that are authorized in each fund. So it doesn't contain the level of detail that we've been looking through in our budget hearings or even the same level of detail that's in the capital facilities plan. I've advocated in the past that we change that in some way, and there are a lot of different ways that we could be doing that. But in lieu of that, I propose, uh, four additional sections to the text of the budget ordinance. And those are, in short, one, a hiring freeze throughout the rest of next year, prohibiting any new hire, including new positions or filling vacant positions, that is funded by general revenue, sales tax, property tax, um, utility tax, without approval by city council resolution. And then with some exceptions. Those exceptions being for the police and fire departments and the position of HR director. And this ob- obviously wouldn't also affect any, uh, employee positions that are funded by the utilities because if they're not funded by general revenue, they wouldn't be affected by that hiring freeze. That'd be very similar to the hiring freeze that we already have in effect under our emergency declaration for COVID-19, um, with a substantial difference that there would be some departments exempted and that the city council would have to, by resolution, approve any other exceptions. The second proposal is to not allow any general revenue to be expended as match for the Department of Commerce Electrification of Transportation Systems Program grant. Uh, we talked about this, I think it was last week. That grant requires a match of 50%, $30,000. And although it would pay for something that is virtuous, uh, electric car chargers downtown, presumably in the city hall parking lot, the finance committee indicated we didn't think we were going to have that money very early on in the year due to COVID. And I think we still don't have that money. You know, that money needs to go to the next fire truck, or it needs to go to the fire station, or it needs to go to any number of these other needs that we have not yet fulfilled, like ER and R or pavement management. So that's, that's the second point. Third, um, and fourth, I think are important directives to do more work to prepare for budgets in the future. And the first, um, I think it probably could result in an expense during 2021 if we can figure out how to fund it. But there was recently a newspaper article about, uh, city council members being unaware of how much things cost and, and with particularity, uh, uh, respecting the water treatment plant decommissioning. And we've had a lot of trouble understanding this budget and prior budgets. And we've talked about before utilizing a data platform that would make available the budget, the city payroll, the city's financial performance, and a running list of transactions to the public. There's a product called Suprata. Other cities, including Seattle and including Port Angeles, use it. It's made by the same company that owns our financial software that we currently use. So this proposal would be that the finance committee, the council finance committee, investigate and evaluate options for an interactive data platform website to improve transparency, accountability, and governance by providing us more in-depth, up-to-the-minute access into our finances. Um, and it would require us to report our findings and a recommendation to the city council by the end of April. And then finally, uh, the fourth bullet here is to instruct the city council's Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee to create, um, a real plan for provision of community services in Anacortes. A lot of that, for sure, is not going to be direct service provision by the city. It's going to be connections to county service providers, connections to nonprofits. But we certainly have city residents in financial, emotional, mental health crisis who are not getting the services that they need to really fully participate as members of our community. And while the social worker contract position that we have found some money for in this budget is a useful, um, start, it's not going to be the end-all of, of that need. And so this last bullet here that I propose would be to spend six months working with the public, working with nonprofits and other service providers and other city departments to analyze what those needs are across the whole spectrum of needs, what programs are already out there, what needs aren't being met, and how we can find sustainable long-term funding sources to serve those people with what they, they really need. So that would be the HACX committee, our Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee, and we'd ask them to report back by the end of June. Those four things I propose that we add to the budget ordinance. I'd ask for council discussion.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Ms. Moulton?
I support all four of these additions to our budget. And I particularly want to mention how helpful it would be to me as a council member and as a citizen to have an open, an open books type data platform for a greater understanding of our budget and how it works and the city's financial responsibilities, obligations, and priorities. I think it's a wonderful tool. I've delved into the Port Angeles version, and it's amazing what you can learn there and how things work together. I think it'd be a very great benefit to our, our municipal government and our community and our staff. I think it's a win-win. And also, I'm a champion of the plan to really analyze and identify the inventory of our social service providers and resources, identify the gaps that there are, and the best way to sustainably and effectively fill them, and how to get the funding to do so long-term. I'm absolutely committed to that. Thank you.
Mayor Gear?
Um, Mr. Moulton?
I, I really wanted to echo Ms. Moulton's, uh, comments. Uh, I strongly support adding all four of these items to the, uh, to the budget document as well. I've spent a little bit of time playing with the, the open, open books tool that Port Angeles has also, and like Carolyn was saying, it's, it is terrific. It is really cool and really intuitive. It is really cool and really intuitive to dig into numbers and where, where money is being spent and how. Um, and I also really support the idea of taking a, kind of an entire community sort of needs analysis, look at what, what our social services situation is and the kinds of needs that we have and, and doing so in a holistic way. So I, I really like the idea of assigning that to the, the HACX committee and, uh, and to digging into it over the course of, of several months. So, thank you, Mr. Walters, for, uh, putting these items forward.
Mayor Gear.
Yes, Ms. McQuillan.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I just want to say that, uh, uh, Mr. Walters sent us kind of a, a draft of his thoughts. And I just want to say that I really appreciated seeing them because they were four issues that were outstanding that as a new, as a new council member, I wasn't quite sure how we were going to tie them to, um, the budget this year because they're, they're, they require more work before they can become a line item. So the fact that we have heard from our community members and feedback, this is a way to make sure that we have assignments and tasks to, to address, um, coming forward, but still allows us to, um, approve our budget and, and move with that. Um, I, my big thing is, you know, I, I've spent a little time with the, um, the Port, Port Angeles program. And I'm a visual person, not a numbers line person. And I felt like I finally could understand how the different departments kind of break down. It's very visual, um, so, and, and the relationship between departments. So I think that would be a huge benefit, not only to the public, but to someone such as myself. Um, and then the final thing is, is that having the HACX committee work then also with Public Safety Committee. I really, really think there is a lot of wonderful resources that are happening currently in our community and in the county. And making sure that, you know, the city and our stakeholders, um, are at the table, that we tailor this, our program, and, and our work for the next six months um, so that it really fits with our current needs, um, very specifically and that we respond to them. The big thing is, is I think HACX immediately wants to figure out if there's some kind of temporary situation we can, we can get addressed before that six months are up. Because I know there's a lot of concern that waiting six months, there's going to be folks that might slip through, um, through that. And so that is also a discussion that we're going to be having, um, immediately. But, uh, that, that's something that I think we can work on and that probably will need re, to be assessed then at the end of 2021 so that we can tailor it moving forward. I think we need to make sure that we're responsive and agile to our changing needs of our community.
Thank you, Ms. McQuillan.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Young.
I, I like all four of them, I really do. My only concern would be for the third one, which is another software program, given, you know, we've spent a lot of money on Laserfish. We've, you know, we're, we're upgrading the IT department. My only concern with that would be the cost associated with it. And so I'm open and, but I would like to see more about what that cost would be, if that's something we're willing to entertain now as opposed to later. I totally agree that the transparency and this ability to be able to extrapolate what's really happening, how funds are tied and being used, would be a wonderful tool for the community. But my only concern would be that of the cost associated with another program. So I'd like to see more about that, particularly in this budget that we're talking about, that's very limited at the time. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mayor Gear.
Yes, Mr. Walters.
And to Mr. Young's point, the proposal is to investigate. Um, we could probably pretty quickly get a, a price tag on the Socrata platform. Those might not be the entire cost associated with deployment either. So, uh, we would spend a couple of months working through that. There may also be other platforms, alternatives to Socrata that have, um, similar benefits. Um, so it doesn't commit us to any funding and it doesn't commit us to an expense even in 2021. Maybe we turn it on in 2022. But it does say, yeah, this is important. We should figure out if we want to do it and we should spend the time working through it.
Hey, great discussion. Anything, um, else? We, so we, we, we finished that and we kind of jumped in. So you, we jumped right into item 6A then, ordinance, um, 3078, adopted in the 2021 budget. Um, so is there continued discussion tonight in addition to what, um, Mr. Walters has brought forward on the budget? Steve, do you have additional things you want to add? Um, council additional questions? Okay, Mr. Hogland?
Uh, nothing from my end, mayor. Um, I was thinking, I have, um, reached out to Tyler, uh, got some very preliminary information on Socrata. Perhaps we can review that at, uh, CFC Wednesday and have a bit of a report to come back next week.
Okay, so what I heard from the council in general, we like the direction we're going. We want to add, uh, Mr. Walters' four items. Um, we want to adjust the CFP for our conversation this evening. What else do we need to bring back next week for you to be comfortable with entertaining, approving our 2021 budget? What else are you going to need? Right, well, if, if, you know, if you don't have it tonight, an email in the morning or phone call so we can get your stuff to you this week. So we are prepared for Monday night, the 21st. So is there any more discussion on the budget or the CFP this evening? Okay, well, if, if, if that's the case, the, um, we're going to move on then to the final item this evening. And we're going to go into an executive session tonight.
Mayor Gear.
Yes, Mr. Hogland.
Did you want to close the public hearing tonight?
I did close the public hearing already. I did do that on the CFP. Um, and that's the only one, correct? Okay, so that's done. And so we're going to move on now to item, um, 6B, I guess, which is going to, we're going to go into executive session. And the executive session will, um, be pursuant to RCW Section 42.0, .110 to discuss litigation or potential litigation. The executive session will last approximately 20 minutes and no action will be taken. So the council will need to sign out of this meeting and go into, I believe it's a team's meeting for our executive session. So thank you, everyone, for attending this evening and we'll see you all next week.
Goodbye.